Okay, time is now six forty-five. I'd like to call this Town of Plainfield Pension Board Meeting to Order for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one at six forty-five. Roll call.
Kathy Tendrich.
Tom Senkowitz.
Kevin Cunningham. And I did receive a message from Christie earlier that she will not be attending tonight. So we are all set. Item C to approve the meeting minutes from January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Hearing no discussion. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Item D, new business. Consider an act on retirement request from town employees. You'll see in your packet. Here is one request. And that is for Mr. Paul Yellen. Mr. Yellen has retired from the Town of Plainfield. And he has served us for thirty-two years and seven months. It's a long time. His request for his monthly pension is for a monthly pension to be paid to Paul Yellen for the amount of fifteen hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents monthly. Any discussion on that item?
Kevin, how will it affect? Is he still going to work as a consultant?
Well, he's working as a part-time employee. And what we're doing right now, as a matter of fact, we had four applicants for the position, two of them who are qualified. When he comes in tomorrow, he's going to schedule those two people for an appointment to do the interviews. And we hope to have those interviews done within a couple of weeks. And then if we have an appropriate candidate via the interview process, we'll be hiring. So he's just going to be here on the interim to bring in the new person for Plainfield and give them the introductions to all four of the fire chiefs, a brief overview of what we're doing here. And then we'll, and then Paul will retire from this position here.
Thank you, Kevin. He certainly deserves that.
Yep, spent a long, long time here.
Kevin, this is Kelly. I just wanted to let it be known that he chose to get the payment of twenty-year certain life option. So he's not going to get a single life pension, but he'll get the twenty-year certain life option, which is an annual earnings of fourteen thousand, four hundred, ten dollars and twenty-three cents.
So how is he going to have that paid out? He wants to...
It'll, he'll receive fourteen thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents annually divided by twelve. It will be a monthly payment.
Okay, thank you. I do have that, that email. I was going to open it up and read through it, but I thank you.
Right. I just wanted it to be noted as a twenty-year certain life, not a single life pension.
Yep. All right. So if I do the quick calculations, if you don't mind, just give me a minute here. Fourteen, four, ten, twenty-three?
Yep.
It should be twelve hundred dollars and eighty-five cents monthly.
Correct.
Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
So on the, on the breakdown that we had gotten sent out, it's got the annual pension down at eighteen, six seventy-four, ninety-five. So does that have been noted on there, what you were just saying with that option?
Well, yeah. What happened is this is, this was the single life pension, which I calculated to him originally. So that's what, what was dispersed to you guys. But I should have shared with you that he chose a different option. So in our pension fund, we have three different options, I want to say, that they can choose. So he chose to do not the single life pension that you see in front of you, but the fourteen thousand dollar one.
And there's, there's the actual email, and the email shows the fourteen, ten, twenty-three.
Will it still begin on February first?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we could entertain a motion at this time to do a pension calculation for Paul Yellen, starting February first, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of twelve hundred dollars and eighty-five cents monthly?
I'll make that motion, Kevin, Kevin, to start on February first, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty-five cents per month.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And that was our only applicant for pension at this time. So if, so what the business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
A second.
And all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. It'll be a few minutes, obviously at seven o'clock, and we'll start up the select meeting. Thank you. Okay, the time is now seven P M. I'd like to call this Town of Plainfield Board of Selectment Meeting to Order on March eighth at seven P M. And ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. All right, we'll go through roll call.
Mark Agnew.
Kathy Tendrich.
Kevin Cunningham.
Becky Hewitt.
Thank you. Item C to review and approve the minutes of three-three, two thousand and twenty-one.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from March third, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Item D, public comment. Hearing none, we go into old business. We have none at this time. Item F, new business. Item number one, consider and act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector, totally a hundred and four dollars and eighty-one cents as follows. Brian L. Casey, Jr., twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. Donald F. Gladling, seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents. For a grand total of one oh four eighty-one.
I'll make a motion to act on the tax refunds in the amount of one hundred and four dollars and eighty-one cents as stated.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two. Is line item transfers. So as the budget season rolls through, we do have some adjustments to make usually for line item transfers based on what has been transpiring throughout the year. One of the items we talked about at the last meeting was the vehicle purchases for the police. And so because the bid came in a little higher than anticipated, there is a request for line item transfers for that to help the overage. You'll notice also that there was highway overtime. We've had multiple February storms, which has brought us down unfortunately to a lower number for what we have left over. We do have animal control salaries, recovering hours for people that were out on vacation and such. So again, there's an adjustment needed there. Tax refunds, we did have at the last couple of meetings, I think it was two meetings ago, and had normally large tax refund. So that's why that was due to a settlement from previous. So that's why that request is in there. And town revale, N E C O C had an R F P that didn't get signed until two thousand and twenty-one. Again, a number that was higher anticipated that we, you know, estimated that. So the grand total for what we need to do transfer for is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. You'll see that there is a line items, different line items to help us to transfer over from. And these are because we have anticipated savings at this point. And so we know we are okay with the following: five thousand dollars for highway motor fuel, five thousand dollars for unemployment benefits, three thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars for police department vehicle expense, ten thousand dollars for highway sand and gravel, five thousand dollars for highway pituminous, and thirty-one hundred dollars from legal notice advertising. Again, to a match of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. And once we do, if we vote to propose this to go forward, it goes to the Board of Finance for their approval. Any discussion on any of these items? Any questions?
Just one question. Animal control, you said that was overtime?
Well, they were covering because it was out on vacation and also because of the full-time person who's had a surgery. So we needed to cover those hours. So what is your pleasure on this?
So I'll make a motion to act on the line item transfers and send it to the Board of Finance.
Second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thank you. And I know Tom will be looking forward to seeing that next one as the next meeting. So he'll be there to explain. Number three, consider an act on reappointments to advisory building committees. There is, we never really came with a, a final date for which they would need it to be, you know, working through their process. So when it was put into the system online, there's that online system in the town clerks area, it defaulted it to a one-year term. So to fix that very quickly, what we could do is entertain a motion to have Sean Peterson, Mike Paquette, Ed Corson, Rob Kerr, Ron Roberts, and Paul Yellen to be reappointed into the advisory building committee, starting date February eighteenth, twenty-one, through March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Sean Peterson, Mike Paquette, Ed Corson, Rob Kerr, Ron Roberts, and Paul Yellen to the advisory building committee for the start date of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and then the end date of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And another one would be the ag commission. I actually reached out and spoke to Dawn Van Cedarfield, and she, you know, explained her situation and that she does have a job that doesn't allow her to go and give her all and put her efforts into the level of commitment that she'd like to do. So she was okay with us moving to go to this removal of having her via the charter, seven nine one. So we can actually act on having more people come in at another meeting in the future. If it's your pleasure, we can also entertain a motion to remove the member based on section nine one, seven nine one for Dan Van Cedar, I'm sorry, Dawn Van Cedarfield.
Ask a question. What, what party affiliation?
I don't know. Actually, I don't know.
Okay, I just wondered, so we know what to read, you know, where we...
I will look at it for the next meeting, then. I'll let you know.
Kevin, did she put that in writing?
Yeah, the problem, the problem was the chairperson wanted her to, she told the chairperson she wanted to step down. So Dawn put it in email to the chair.
Okay.
And so I was on the impression that it's okay to do that and then pass it over to the town clerk. It is not. The process is supposed to be that they have to have an in-person written submission saying that they're, you know, resigning from that post. So I called her to say, you know, you can't get here. I understand that. Would you mind if we did this instead? She was fine with it. She understood.
Okay.
And that's, that's the ag commission?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we remove Dawn Van Cedarfield from the agricultural commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I would entertain a motion to add two items onto the agenda. One is item number five, to talk about radio purchases for the police commission. And number six, to discuss a security issue at the police station.
I'll make a motion to add number five and number six to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 So item number five is something that's come up very recently, and I appreciate the fact that the chief is here. We also have for backup and support, we had Kelly. Kelly's here as well. Maybe Kelly can start off by explaining what occurred financially to make a change that we might be able to do this.
The state of Connecticut received COVID funds from federal government. And these funds we can use for our first responders, so our police salaries. So I'm able to reduce the expenditures of the police salaries for ninety-five thousand for this year. So that would free up some of the police salary funds.
And can that be about ninety-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, and so putting that money from COVID funds into the salary line items and frees up that money. We had the meeting the other day with Police Chief Ariaga, and we sat down and said, okay, well, here's some unexpected funds. We know that there's things that you need to do. And we were looking at things that would minimize the impact to budget seasons. And this was one of the ideas that came up. So it's a, it's a little more involved than just, you know, putting ninety-five thousand dollars for it because we know that those radios are needed, number one, much clearer reception. I had a demonstration this morning. So the idea is that we'd like to be able to purchase something that will help us to offset and not have to worry about a five-year capital item in the future. This is a good number to do that with. And Chief Ariaga, if you wanted to fill in on where we'd be able to get the rest of the money and how much the actual total would be, and then we'll go to the next step.
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm going to do my best. I'm not the perfect radio guy. But I'm kind of going to explain a little bit about our radio system, how it works, and how often we use it. And basically, what we have is, our radio system consists of mobile devices that each officer carries, as well as mobiles for the cruisers, as well as dispatch consoles. So our system is relatively old. It's, it's been around since the existence of the P D, though we have fixed it over the years. We run analog system. It is our lifeline. It is our piece of equipment that we use every day, all day long. Anybody that has a scanner and actually listens to the police will hear the cops or the dispatchers often asked to repeat or use a code we call S forty to repeat because you can't hear because of the stack, the static and the reception that we are having with our equipment. Our infrastructure is very antiquated, is very old. Basically, what we have is we have an antenna on an E C O C tower. It's a state site that we use that we've often replaced several times. It costs a couple of thousand dollars each time. They just have some climb of the tower. So it is very pricey to fix. Just last year, we spent several thousand to have it fixed once again. And again, we still continue to have the problem. What happens with the analog system is that we get a lot of frequencies that actually interfere with our transmissions, and that causes a lot of problems. We actually even get skips from as far back, far out as Long Island Sound from fishing vessels onto our radio system. So we have had this problem over and over, and we look at ways that we can try to improve. We tried replacing the radios. It helped very little. We tried replacing our repeaters, which we have scattered in several spots throughout the town. We also have repeaters in our cruiser, all of which try to give us better reception. But the problem is, we Band-Aid fixed this system so much that there's nothing left to fix. So we are at its peak when it comes to trying to replace parts of the system. With that being said, this is one of the officers' biggest safety issues, is that lifeline to be able to call for help or call for dispatch to get the proper services in route. So what ways or what options do we have to replace our system? And one of those options is obviously to rebuild a whole system for Plainfield P D. What does that entail? So that entails a lot of things. One, it entails putting new towers throughout the town to ensure that we have the coverage, as well as additional repeaters, as well as replace all the equipment that, that it will be need to have your own radio system that is dedicated just for Plainfield P D. Sounds great, but obviously with anything comes a price. So how much is that price to, to build a whole system for Plainfield P D and what they're going to use it for? You're talking anywhere upwards of one to possibly even two million dollars. And that is obviously not foreseeable now or in the near future. So then that brings us to what other options that we have? Well, another option that we have is to piggyback, what I want to call piggyback, off the state system. So the state has a system, and it's a digital system that is free from municipalities and all law enforcement agencies. And actually, even highway departments, et cetera, can actually jump onto the system. And what does that offer? It offers, it's a digital system, so it offers better voice quality. Even with background noise or corrupted signal, your speech clarity is much better. It delivers a clear voice even in extreme conditions. Our analog system, depending on the weather, is really going to dictate how good your reception is actually going to be. With this digital system, the bandwidth, far outreach is what analog can offer, making it much more efficient. We can communicate with any state agency, any local agency in the entire state of Connecticut, whether it's in Litchfield County, Wyndham County. If I have an officer going to pick up a prisoner out in Litchfield County, the radios will actually work crystal clear from there all the way back to dispatch here. So basically, what I'm telling you, it has a lot stronger coverage. It eliminates static, background noises, all of which you get in the analog system. Battery life is a lot better on your radios. Our officers work twelve to sixteen-hour shifts. They work past that and then some. But most importantly, the infrastructure. We don't have to do anything with it. It is the state. It's controlled by the state. So if a tower goes down, Plainfield P D is not liable because the rest of the state of Connecticut actually uses the tower. So there's no maintenance as it relates to the infrastructure and building that out. So there's zero cost and zero liability as it relates to that. Something goes down, state of Connecticut pays and gets it fixed. So where does our cost actually run in? And basically, all, all our cost runs into, I don't want to say just runs into, it's, it's replacing our current equipment. Not antennas, not repeaters, not towers. Basically, just replacing the portable radios, the mobile radios inside the car, and the dispatch consoles. Those are only the pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. Once those are replaced, we're on the state system, and we won't have to spend any money unless one of the equipment goes down. If a radio breaks because it got soaked in water, which, they're pretty durable. They will last for years to come. But we'll never have to get that big one-time purchase to buy twenty portables, twenty mobiles, et cetera, to get on the network. So all in all, that would be the new system and the most reasonable to actually go to. In doing so, there is obviously a cost associated with the equipment. And that equipment is approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And what that does, it actually replaces every single portable radio, every mobile device, and every dispatch console. And that actually will give us a statewide coverage. And as the first selectmen heard, it's night and day compared to the coverage that we have now. I know that was a lot to take in. So if you have any questions, please, I'll be more than happy to answer.
All right. So I do have a couple of things I want to add in because there's a certain process we need to do. Yeah, number one, thank you very much for that background information. I just wanted to check. You've already started to do a search on how much this would cost us through a state bid.
That's right.
Roughly, how much, how much would it be?
Approximately a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay. Of that, we could utilize ninety-five thousand from what we were given for the COVID funds.
Correct.
So you are going to be able to figure out a way where we can actually take the rest of the money from unexpended monies from, let's say, salaries from people that weren't hired, so on and so forth.
That's correct. And obviously, as we know, Chief Superdunk retired, so that also leaves some funding there as well. So the funding is actually, the fifteen thousand that we would still need is in our salary line item. We would be able to cover that.
All right. So we have a need. We have a figure that can cover it. The questions that I would say, we, we as a board of selectmen, we need to do is, according to the town charter, we need to basically recommend, according to town charter two-five B, because it's over fifty thousand dollars. We as a board of selectmen would have to recommend a, for a non-budgeted appropriation of anything more than fifty thousand dollars, we need to get, first of all, our approval to recommend it to go to the Board of Finance. And the Board of Finance would then have a meeting and a hearing for a town meeting. Because it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we'd have to go to a referendum. So that's the process that we have to follow. So I would ask the Board of Selectmen to consider this at this point so that we can actually do that recommendation of the, and I'm going to make sure we have the figure correct, Chief. Hundred and ten, what do you remember, your exact number you gave was?
Sorry, I just broke up.
Was it the exact number, a hundred and ten, what?
The current estimate that we have right now, it would be on the high end, is, excuse me, one second. A hundred and nine thousand is what we have for a higher estimate as of this time.
And you have that as an even estimate, a hundred and nine thousand?
Hundred eight thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Okay. So with that said, and we have an idea of what the number really is. We've had discussion on the item, and I do hate to bring it up. This is something we're still being put together as, as we speak. So I want to know what the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen would be. Would we like to do the recommendation, go forward? We want to talk about it further. What would you like?
I just want to, I have one question, that's all. Going with the state, is there any monthly fee or yearly fee?
Great question. So it is zero cost monthly, zero cost yearly. We actually sign a five-year contract, which is renewable five more times, don't quote me exactly, free again. So it's just a contract saying that you have to buy your own equipment. And then if something happens to our infrastructure, we fix it, not Plainfield, but the state fixes it. Zero fee, and it keeps renewing until somebody decides to cancel. But I, if the Town of Plainfield decides to cancel. But it's a five-year contract that continues time and time again at zero cost.
So I have another question to go along with that is a hypothetical. We eventually get to a position where we're adding more staff, adding more vehicles. We would just purchase per item to add on?
Yeah, yeah. So what they did is they actually give a number based on our size, and they actually times that by about twenty percent. So let's just say we needed forty devices. They actually times that by twenty percent, and they give us licensing for, let's just say, sixty-five, seventy. So it covers for the next few years. And then if we need more, we just come back and say we need more, and then they give us those licenses, even whatever we need.
I guess I have one more question. Because Mike had mentioned this when we went on a tour. He had mentioned about going with the regional dispatcher at some point, knowingly. Is that going to affect this at all?
So that's still a lengthy process out. But what's going to happen is it's going to give us better clarity because I don't know Quinnipiac Valley's radio system or what they have. So in reality, Q V could jump on that system, but I can't speak on their behalf. Any municipality, a nine-one center can actually jump on this system if they chose to. So if that is down the road where we do regionalized dispatch, we would make this all work.
If you're in that five-year contract, it may be a possible, you could be able to...
Correct.
Move right to that. Okay. I just don't want to, you know, limit yourself from moving to the dispatcher.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Kathy, any comment, concerns, questions?
My only concern is, is there any kind of backup, Mario? So what if something happened with the state that the system went down? Would we still have a backup?
So this, this system is, if this system goes down, the whole state of Connecticut is going to go down. But they have redundancy backups that we would actually tap into, and we're getting really advanced even for me. But there is systems, and we talked about that with the state radio network individuals that were here the other day. So if something happened, they have a whole backup system there, like UConn. And then they have another, like, third backup system at another spot. So we have redundancy after redundancy, and I don't think we'll ever have that. Hopefully, we never have that problem where it ever comes down to that. We actually just received a couple of their radios late last week, and we've been testing them around town just to make sure that it works, even though they already know the coverage. They already did all this. But to be able to have it in your hands and actually do it yourself is pretty amazing. And just to see the difference between the two and the sound quality between the two is literally night and day. And you just, it's amazing. And then just showing the other officers, and they're like unbelievable on how clear it is.
Yep, there's no static in the background. I just wanted to be very clear with this. This isn't something that we just all of a sudden said, okay, we need it. This is something, I've been to the police commission meetings, and I've heard this myself firsthand for a while now. This is something that is on the horizon. The only thing that I would say that we, we should have done, you know, last year was, we should have put it into the five-year capital. The reason why I say that is because if you look at the five-year capital, you'll notice that the police station, that's not listed in there. So had that been listed, according to the charter, it would have said something that we have, it would have been, you know, one of the budgeted items in a five-year capital. But it's not. So really, this has to go through the proper channel. So really, this has to go through the proper channels step by step, and that's why I wanna make sure that everybody understands, yes, it was an item that was discussed previously, yes, it's being discussed as we go along, but we still need to go through the channels and do the proper thing. And really, it's, you know, giving the information to the public, giving the information to the selectmen, letting them, you know, weigh out what they'd like to do with it. If we so choose to make, to recommend to the Board of Finance that this is what we'd like to do, we would be able to then put it forward to the Board of Finance. They would vet out the same process that we're doing right tonight. I'm sure that we'll have some more data and background for them as well. But basically, then they would have a town meeting and then send it to a referendum, because it is well over the fifty thousand dollars of a non-budgeted item.
So I would like to make that motion, Kevin, if there's no other questions, and recommend to send it, I'm sorry.
I have one, probably for Kelly. The ninety-five thousand, that would go into the police salary?
Salaries, yeah. So the COVID funds are just for salaries, it's not for like purchase of equipment or anything like that. So the ninety-five thousand is reimbursement for the officers that have to patrol due to COVID, certain areas, just to reimburse, yes.
Yep.
Okay, that's it, thank you, go ahead Kathy.
Just, before you finish, the idea was that all through COVID processes, the state of Connecticut, FEMA, all of those things, we track all of that. So, you know, Kelly keeps track of all the different things through, you know, the chief's report about who's on duty, when they go out there, what interactions they have with COVID issues. So all those things were tracked, and that's when we put them in, they finally did a reimbursement. So it does help, and Kelly did a good job, and so did the chief to follow up with that. And this is what the result is, we have an opportunity then to utilize those monies for something, and it doesn't come out of the general fund, it comes out of a current budget, and I think that this is a win for a lot of reasons.
Yeah, as soon as COVID started, we initially started a file, and we started documenting every hour, every minute of every expense related to COVID, just in case something like this did come back, and thankfully it has, and it's gonna allow us, if it gets approved, to purchase equipment that we may not have a purchase for a few more years down the road. And out of more of a local tax base as well, so this helps out tremendously.
So Kevin, one other question, if this does not get approved, because it has to go to a town meeting, that ninety-five thousand dollars that you're taking from the salaries, will that go into the general fund, or what will happen?
Well, I guess that would be up to the chief. If there's other things that they may want to look to purchase, or we could come back and discuss it, and then bring it forth again to this type of a meeting and go forward. This was one of the higher-ticket items, really, reality was, it was a higher-ticket item, and it wasn't listed in there, but it had been talked about. If you go back and look at the minutes from the different police commission meetings, it was discussed multiple times over the, oh, at least a year that I know of. But yeah, they could do some other things with it. If you take a look at it, I would love to see anything else in that five-year capital line items, anything there to be, you know, looked at in the future if it doesn't get approved. So, let's see if I take a quick look back at that. You know, they've just finished the jail cells, and they're just about done, right? Almost, almost a thousand percent, we'll talk about that soon. But then there's other things which are obviously a little higher, a hundred and seventy-five for the record management, the storage building seventy-five could be another item to do. And then, of course, the backup gas generator is another item to do as well. But those are some thoughts. But I'd love to see this one go through, because this one will come up on our, on our future five-year capital if we don't do it now. And it's something, I really mean this, I listened to the radios this morning. It's night and day, what we have currently right now is, for those people who love records, the old scratchy sound you hear in the background, that's pretty much what we currently have right now. But for the clarity of what you have is more like a phone at this point with the newer system. So what you'd have is a dead spot or something like that, where you couldn't hear it. Every few seconds could be potentially a lifesaver. So this clarity would do just that, in my opinion.
I think it's a great opportunity to purchase the new system, it's much needed. So again, I would like to make that motion and recommend to send it to the Board of Finance.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, we know the figure is what, one oh?
One hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Is that correct, Mario?
That is correct, and the reason why I just kept saying a hundred and ten thousand is because there's always wiring, extra wiring, and nuts and stuff, but that is correct, the exact quote that we got, yes.
Thank you.
I have a motion for the one oh eight, two forty-nine, eighty. Art?
I second it, all right.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Item number six is what we wanted to do by way of going to executive session. And what I would do at this point would ask to go into executive session for the purpose of security matters, and to include Chief Ariaga into that meeting for discussion. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion out of going to executive session for the purpose of security issue. The police invite Mario Ariaga, Police Chief.
I'll second that.
Okay, and at this time, we will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will now go into executive session, just bear with me a second, because I wanna make sure I do this right by putting people into waiting rooms, I will do that right now. And I'll have to figure out which Kevin Cunningham to put over there. Yeah, I know, I forgot to change the name, the one with, actually, the one with the hair, very funny. All right, one, two, three, and... Thank you very much, okay. All right, so the time is now seven thirty-one, and one more person to go over there, wait a minute, wait a minute. And waiting room, Kathy, you were making a motion.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session, and I have seven forty, Kevin, I'm not sure if that's the time you have also.
Yep, absolutely. All right, so we're now out of executive session, Art, you in a second?
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There was no action taken during executive session. But we are gonna be discussing basically a motion at this point for, we're gonna do, we're looking to upgrade the security camera systems at the police station. So we'd entertain a motion to go out to bid. To upgrade, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to go out to bid for the upgrade of the security cameras at the police station.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we do anticipate that Mario will help us to write that bid process out. We can help to process that right away, and again, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
All right, any other discussion at this time? Hearing, oh, yes there is, I apologize, yes there is. I think in your packet, you might find like item number five. So for public information, state of Connecticut came back and said that they didn't have enough funding for the SEMA testing. They talked to, I'm sorry, for the COVID nineteen testing. SEMA four came to us and said, can we make some adjustments? And so we proposed our adjustments to state of Connecticut, which they got approved. For the new hours for the town of Plainfield, you can still get COVID nineteen regional testing at Plainfield Senior Center, Thursdays from three to seven. So that's the new change. We were not able to continue on with the other Mondays and Thursdays, but other places are, like Quinnbach Valley on Saturdays, eight to noon. Putnam River View Market is gonna be Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine AM to four PM. Again, these are no appointment, drive-up, free tests, and this is for the testing site. You get your results back probably within two days, and I saw that they came back in a day from then. So that's one thing in your packet, the second thing is, we had the Conservation Commission who was working with the Ag Commission on a Plainfield open space survey. If you have a chance, please go online, take a look at that, put it out there, or you can have copies here as a town hall to fill out and give to the town. They are interested in learning about what to do with their open space and recreational spaces. So there is that option for you to help out to see what's going on. I am also gonna mention that I'm in the process of working with a company for health and safety training of Connecticut for the American Red Cross CPR First Aid to residents. Now, we are doing this, I've asked all of the fire departments and the police if they're interested for taking the training courses, and all the fire departments have an in-house person right now. We do have someone from the rec department as well, but I'm offering it again for residents as well. This was, by the way, the final step, we believe, in getting our Heart Safe Community Award from the state of Connecticut. So we can do this, again, offer for any officer or resident in the town of Plainfield. We'll have two sets of classes, and there'll be a signup for it, and we're working to get a contracted time with this heart safety training in Connecticut soon. I do know that the FRC is doing a course right now for babysitters. And I'm sure that with things going as they are, the state of Connecticut will be opening up more and more venues for towns, municipalities to have different events, so that gives us an opportunity. These courses, by the way, will be hybrid, they are gonna be online. So you can actually have one of the mannequins from the rec center to take home, do your testing, online, virtual. And if you wanted to do the one-on-one actual test, you could do that as well, and they'll schedule time for the one-on-one. So that's the next thing up. Just so you know, that the state has opened up some of the things, I keep on turning this page, my whiteboard's over here. The Bike Night, VJ Bike Night was still at this point being spoken about for July fifteenth. I know the chief was working with Leon about that one. So we're planning, all the planning stages are there, all the fundraising processes are there. The same thing for August seventh for the PVA events to be held here, and August eighth, the VJ parade. So in conjunction with that, we'll be putting in our budget for this upcoming year, the fireworks. So those are the things that are happening. Hopefully, we still can maintain being safe. I also put an email out to, we're trying to work with the De Kimball Hospital to see if it's possible that we can have a town-run vaccine clinic here at the town hall. So we're just trying to coordinate, you know, when it would be, what would be, how, you know, how soon it can be, and have it for people by that time, we'll see how it goes, forty-five and up. And I think the process that ran over at the high school was done, you know, the whole process was very well. You organize, come in, you get your card ready, you go up and get your vaccine in and out. So, other than the fifteen-minute waiting period, but I think it was run very well as far as that goes. So we're trying to expand that for more people, I just wanted you to know that that's what's in the works at this point. Um, any other items for other? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's seven forty-seven, thank you, and I'll have a great night, and Chief, I'll talk to you later on, probably tomorrow, and we'll start the ball rolling.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.